It's hot in here.
Okay, that's not, maybe that's not. Oh.
That must have been when you bell.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is it time for this? My good God, that's next week, isn't it?
Yeah, I'll come in the yoga.
November twentieth through twenty-second, that's next week. I did not have that in mind.
I'm going for the weekend. Yes, how about you?
Oh, sir.
You want to take my spot? All right.
Make it.
Oh, my God.
So you're there.
Thank you.
Thursday and Saturday.
We're thinking Thursday, it looks like. Let me see where my flight is. I'll tell you when I'm ready.
All right, your bell.
Carol, and the same thing happened.
Hold on one second.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and, um... We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna ask all of the bells if you would sign our friends a word of prayer before we get started.
Let us pray. For our God, our Father, we thank you, but this is the day the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad, and we thank you for this gathering. We bless you for who you are and whose we are. We ask, in the precious name of Jesus, that you look down on these, your people, your servants, who've gathered together to deliberate and make decisions on behalf of this community. Endow us with wisdom from on high. Bless us, is our prayer, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much. I do you keep a prayer in your spirit. I appreciate it.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord, say.
Everybody can do that. So, uh, a couple of things. First of all, I want to, uh, pass out the United Way forums. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have to tell you. Hopefully, you have seen the massive impact that the United Way has done, not only all the time, particularly recently partnering with the city of Savannah. Uh, we took the lead in this region and make sure that individuals that have been affected, first of all, by the international paper closing and then through the federal shutdown and then through the delay of SNAP benefits, um, have been addressed. They have coordinated, um, various ways of people in this community having a trusted way to be able to give, and that impact has been across this community. Gas cards, gift cards, food, lunch, um, various services, paying of utility bills. United Way has really been on partner in doing this annually. Um, we have an opportunity, as all the women bell probably can attest to, in giving back, um, to be able to give again. And so, um, I would love for this council to be one hundred percent represented in United Way. So, we're not asking you telling you what to give, but we all want this council to give something. Um, we, it's hard for us to ask our employees to be able to give, uh, and those that leave don't. So, please, follow your hearts. You could do it through payroll deduction, you could do it through a simple check, or you could do like Alden Colombo, just write half million dollars and just, um, just be done with it. So, um...
Thank you, Alden.
Yes, it could be you next year.
Right.
You know, it can be you. Today, you know, Georgia Lottery, it could be the day.
It could be you.
Thank you.
Um, please do that. Secondly, um, you know, um, our federal shutdown is over. But we know that it will take some time to get, uh, the government up and going. So people are still dealing with effects, um, of that, to include plane travel. I was supposed to be in Brazil, actually, I've been returning this morning. And those flights were canceled, uh, as of this past Sunday when I was going for the COPA conference. So, um, if you're traveling, and to those that are traveling, um, they said it'll take a couple of days. Just make sure you're checking. I think we'll be fine for the national cities. That being said, we have an extremely capable assistant city manager in the politics chair today who will guide us through today's presentation. Um, and we, you know, received notification about our city manager's whereabouts as he graduates from the prestigious leadership of Georgia. So we're proud of him for doing that. Today, we'll be talking about master public art, master plan update, uh, housing development update. Uh, we don't have an executive session, right? We don't have any executive session, right? Uh, then we're going to council meeting. Um, I'm gonna have to step out. Mr. Lovett has got me speaking at the VARD Association today. So, if I don't make it back, because I'm tied up in deposition and litigation.
Better you than us.
We'll see how it goes. All right, thank you all so much. Madam City Manager, thank you. The floor is yours.
All right, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I appreciate the opportunity. You can fill in for Mr. Melder, um, and especially today because we have some really good news we want to share with you. Two wonderful topics, public art as well as housing development. Um, but both of them have two parts. The first presentation is gonna be on public art. We'll follow that up with Martin and all of our housing partners that have come up and shared projects that they've been making. Both of those projects are identified in the strategic plan. So I'm excited that we just adopted the plan in July. And here we are about to really achieve one of the very first deliverables out of that. Um, in two weeks, we'll be seeking council's approval to adopt the public art master plan. Today, just to share with you the recommendations, get your feedback, but that information is also posted for the community, uh, at this point. Uh, for the sake of the public and to share with the church how we are keeping our feet to the fire in terms of implementing and delivering on the plan. Um, the public art master plan is identified under priority goal number two, invest in equitable community development and resiliency. Um, and it is specific, develop and implement a public art master plan. When you all adopt the plan in a couple of weeks, we will have delivered on the first part of that, and then the hard work begins in terms of building the actual plan. City Council approved funding for, uh, the master plan process in 2024. I know that you all feel like when you approve funding, you'd like to see projects really hit the ground quickly and not take years to get going. I'm pleased to say that, uh, once, once you all approved money last year, they immediately put out a request for proposals, and you approved the contract in August of last year. By November, we had our groups together. You all recommended people to serve on the steering committee. There was a ton of outreach. I think this is one of the projects that was highlighted by this is the way that you get community engagement across all six districts. And so now you will see the results of that. You have a copy of the draft plan, uh, in your hands. Uh, we look forward to new comments, uh, from now, between now and the time that we have it back and ready for you all to adopt it. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Stuart Miller, our senior director of cultural resources, to introduce our consulting team that's been working with us for years, doing some of the volunteer support.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I am really happy to be here today to share with you the plan for Savannah's public art program. As A.C. Young noted, this plan's been underway for about a year. Many different stages of community engagement being a big piece of that. Our overall role for this plan is to provide public art accessible in all sectors of the city. Quality public art that is equitable and resiliency. Uh, before I introduce our consultant, I do want to note the work of our, thank you, Cultural Affairs Commission. And this public art plan has been on their radar for many years. Uh, they've been instrumentally getting it put forward to this point. I want to thank our steering committee members, whose ideas contributed greatly to the, the plan, and also thank my colleagues in other city departments. Uh, more than a dozen city of Savannah departments weighed in on this plan, and many of those will be involved with the implementation of the plan as well. Our consultant group is Designing Local out of Columbus, Ohio. And here today to present the plan is Amanda Golden, who is the managing principal and co-founder of Designing Local.
Thank you, Stuart. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We are really excited to be at this stage of our process. Uh, just a quick overview of who Designing Local is. Um, as Stuart shared, I'm the managing principal and co-founder. We have had the privilege of doing this in over sixty communities all across the country, uh, which allows us to bring best practices to all the clients that we're serving. Um, and as Stuart said, we've been able to bounce a lot of the ideas that have worked and have not worked in other communities off of your staff to ensure that all the solutions presented in your plan today are localized and will be supported, um, by what your government is able to do. Our team was also joined by W. Projects, Aaron Whistling, who is in the room today. And then we also were joined by Ethos Preservation, and Ellen is here representing Ethos today. They were integral in helping us understand how this policy that we're recommending will impact your code, uh, and making sure that it is in keeping with what the city of Savannah expects, as well as ensuring that our engagement, uh, was localized and, um, very well deployed. So as Stuart shared, we have been doing this for over a year. We have had a number of opportunities for the community to contribute to conversation, and all of our work focused on ensuring that each district had the opportunity to participate in conversation and cast a vision for what public art would look like in their neighborhoods, to ensure that the vision that was presented to you today was equitable and also reflective of all of the residents of Savannah. We've spent a lot of time going back and forth on what the recommendations are going to be to make sure, again, that they are right-sized for all of you today. So, uh, the plan that you have before you is divided into five sections. These sections are very deliberate in that we want to make sure that you have all the tools that you need to implement and roll out a very sound public art program. So the first section outlines kind of what public art is in Savannah today, uh, what people are hoping that it will be tomorrow. We, in the second section, outlines all of our engagement, uh, and kind of what the results of those engagements are and the mandates from the community that we saw. The third section really helps support staff in thinking about how public art shows up in different types of places, what kinds of public art belongs in each of those different types of places. The fourth section outlines some specific ideas and projects. And then the fifth section, which is very technical, is the policy, process, and the administrative recommendations, which I think that all of you are, are most interested in today. Uh, the plan also is meant to be a tool for you. So, you'll notice in the public art plan, uh, that there are a number of best practices that are presented as recommendations for all of you to use and hopefully adopt in the coming months, uh, draft public art ordinance, as well as policy to guide the program itself. That policy will establish how murals are presented in your community. It helps you understand what the process for getting public art implemented will be, how you manage your collection, as well as how you're gonna maintain that collection. And so the recommendations are all based, uh, on community input and those best practices. Uh, in, in the recommendation is a vision for your public art collection, recommendations for across the city. Again, we wanted to be sure that every district was represented and felt that each project and ideas for a project resonated with city, or communities and the values that are reflected in those communities, as well as some administrative recommendations to start the program itself. So, we're gonna go a little bit more in-depth on these five sections. Uh, and we'll take some questions at the end. I know that you probably each have questions specifically about how the program's gonna be deployed and what comes next. But, um, again, we're talking about what a public art plan is and what it is not. Assistant City Manager Young did describe to us that it is the right time, uh, now to do a public art plan, as was mandated in your strategic plan. And this is the first thing in that plan that is being affirmed by the community. We talk a lot about monuments. You guys are rich with history and rich with representation of those monuments, and we talk about how the plan does and does not touch those, uh, pieces. We also talk about why does public art, why is public art needed in Savannah and who this plan will eventually be for. So our vision statement for public art in Savannah, I'm gonna read this, is the only slide that I will read. Public art in Savannah will be inspired by what makes Savannah unique. Its history, hospitality, parks, diverse community, and vibrant culture. Savannah's vision for public art embraces community, meaningful storytelling, fun, and creating connections with neighbors. As the city connects its treasure traditions with its bold future, public art will reveal the community's spirit and character. So some of the recommendations, uh, that you're gonna see today have some specific themes. Again, you have a rich past, and we want to be sure that public art can continue to represent the past while allowing the community to look to the future. Um, and balancing both your rich history and also your rich future. We want to acknowledge what monuments and markers mean to the city of Savannah and help residents and the city move past those as maybe some of the only public art that exists. Uh, we are talking a lot about collaboration and policy and ensuring that, uh, the different departments within your community are able to collaborate and bring public art to fruition. And we also want to talk about what sustainable funding mechanisms might exist. In the curatorial guide, our team really wanted to make sure that the public's vision of specific projects was able to come to life. As you guys think about funding on an annual basis, we wanted to provide some ideas for projects that could be implemented that came straight from the community's vision. And so, in this section, our team has defined what the vision and goals are for each of these projects and where different pieces of public art could come into play. We also helped you think through what the artist's criteria should be when considering public art projects for each of your different neighborhoods. Our, um, our team also wanted to help you think through what the process would be to get public art on the ground. Uh, and so developing a selection process is integral to making this happen. Your third phase is gonna be implementation, of course, all of the things like contracting and permitting, uh, making sure that there's an awareness of what installation oversight looks like and how to make sure that the city of Savannah is receiving a complete project before, um, before the title is exchanged. Um, and making sure that you understand what the maintenance future will be for each of those pieces is gonna be really important. Again, going back to those different typologies and projects that the community said they wanted. Uh, again, we heard over and over again that art should be surprising and joyful. And so, um, in order to kind of help you, uh, think through how that might be, we provided a number of different, um, pieces for you to look at and say, "Oh, this could totally be appropriate for this park in Savannah or this intersection in Savannah." And so, um, the plan defines what each of these pieces are. What is sculpture, environmental, some functional art, murals? We heard over and over again, murals are really important, uh, to the future of the collection here. Um, we also wanted to make sure that there were some placement strategies that were laid out for you all as you consider different projects in the future of the collection. Uh, we knew that some pieces would need to be iterative and may, um, be presented in different neighborhoods. Maybe it's the same artist or a group of artists who are doing pieces that appear along a trail, uh, or in different parks in a neighborhood, or it could be something that existed, uh, as one piece and not iterative. We also wanted to make sure that there were different approaches that were shared here. So not just thinking about how a permanent sculpture gets installed, but thinking about what pop-up and temporary art could be in the city of Savannah, where they could go, uh, and how that could be funded. And also, we really wanted to make sure that the community could participate in creating those pieces, whether they were pop-up or permanent. We wanted to make sure that the community had an opportunity to create those. You'll see in the plan, uh, in this section, that we have recommended different projects for passive parks, recreation parks and playgrounds, walking trails, community recreation and human services center, commercial corridors, as well as waterfront. We know that there's a, a number of opportunities that are coming up with future projects, uh, and we wanted to provide some examples about how public art could be integrated into these types of projects. And here are just some, some great examples of how that might be. We know there's a, a really wonderful playground that's coming online next year. Uh, you have the Tide to Town Trail, uh, which provides a ton of opportunity, uh, for public art, as well as the, the waterfront improvements that you're making on River Street. And finally, uh, the, the final section, which many could argue is the most important section, really lays out policy and process for how a public art program will be realized in Savannah. Again, this portion of the plan will not come to you until, uh, we're thinking January, but we did want to make sure that you understood that it was part of this plan, uh, and it will be coming to you as a, a farther item to consider, um, early in 2026. So, as we think about what the roles and responsibilities for rolling out a public art program might be, we are proposing a new commission be created, and that commission is specifically focused on public art. The Cultural Arts Commission has done an amazing job, uh, focused on their work with cultural arts broadly, but because, um, public art is going to be something that we hope will be an impactful project for years to come, a specific commission is being recommended to think through how projects will come through. We have a number of departments that are going to be involved in the implementation of the program itself. Of course, we have the Department of Cultural Resources, Park and Tree, Planning and Urban Design for any of those permits that need to be issued, as well as Capital Projects Management. And then, of course, your purchasing agency, uh, will be very involved in hiring those artists and ensuring that public process, uh, is being followed. We have a number of other boards and commissions that would also participate in the approval of public art, and that will be detailed in the policy that you will see. But the Historic Design Board will be involved, so will the Preservation Commission, uh, as well as the Historic Site and Monument Commission, and of course, the Cultural Affairs Commission, who has been involved throughout the entire process. So we have ten steps that we're recommending to formally start and establish the public art program. Those are detailed in your document, um, many of which I have just shared with you specifically around your policy and the ordinance. I'm gonna pick up on number five. You guys are about to be in budget season, and showing the community that you are committed to public art as a quality of life item is something that, uh, the community will be really excited about. They've just spent time thinking about these ideas and casting a big vision. And so, number five is really thinking about, uh, what that funding will look like, where those projects are gonna be rolled out at, and we hope in 2026 the public will begin to see the fruits of their conversation. An inventory of your existing collection needs to be established. There is an inventory of existing monuments, but not necessarily public art in your community. The collection assessment report would follow closely behind that, which would really examine the condition of each piece to understand what maintenance needs each piece needs and how you can begin thinking about, uh, your investment as a city in maintaining those pieces of public art. An appraisal of the collection would be after that. That feeds directly into your insurance policy. Uh, and then implementing a process for permit review. And then you'll also see that we are recommending a mural grant program in the document. We heard over and over again that the public is hungry for murals. Everyone has an idea of what wall it should go on, and so we wanted to provide an avenue for both, uh, private property owners as well as artists to begin thinking about how that rolls out. And we believe that a mural grant program is the best path. Again, our next steps are, um, now through the twenty-first, we have this plan that you're seeing in front of you today online. There is a survey that is supported, or is supporting that plan. It asks some questions about what people perceive is missing. Do they agree with the vision statement? Uh, it also asks people if this resonates with them and their community. We'll be able to provide those comments to you, as well as those survey results. At your November twenty-fifth city council meetings, we'll have a, a report printed out so that you can review all of those comments. And then in the new year, we hope that the public art ordinance and policy come before you for consideration, as well as the mural grant program. And we'll take questions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Golden, for your presentation. At this time, any members of city, city council to, um, hold on bell.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Sounds really, really interesting. I guess, um, I suspect maybe when I read it thoroughly and listen to more discussion, um, I'd be convinced that this warrants a separate commission, separate from the Cultural Arts Commission. So, um, I'm sure there's, you know, some thought behind that, so I'll wait to be convinced.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I, uh, just wanted to congratulate, um, Ms. Kathy, um, on the maiden voyage.
Yes.
Congratulations, right? So I have a couple of questions, and I wanna start from the back. Where is the policy? In there. I'm seeing how you are, you have a strategy, let me find it, so. Sixty-five, here we go. Policy process, administrative recommendations. Can you pull that up on the board, please? Okay, so what I found missing here is the most integral part, and that's the citizen. We, you, you've got connected with everybody else. And so, if we want our citizens to be an integral part of this, then there should be some place up here where we are contacting the neighborhood presidents and the associations to make sure that they are part of the key element if you want this story. A lot of times, we roll out stuff, and then there's no people in here, right? And so the other thing, if, if you could amend that to where, since you're rolling out that. So for me, that's like putting the, the horse is already out the gate, and you don't have the main people in there saying what we want in our community. That's the first thing that I noticed. The other thing is, a lot of times when we roll out these, uh, really nice projects, they always start off in the first and second grade. We like art in the third district too. So what is your vision for the third district? We got manholes, we got public buildings there, and so I would like for you specifically to tell us, how are you gonna incorporate one through ten where it's beneficial to the people not in the, the nexus of the second or the first district, but in the third, the fourth, the fifth, and the sixth? And if you do roll this out, how about we start in the sixth district and roll it back up to the first? Because that's where everything happens at, you know, in the first and second grade. The other, the other thing that I wanted to, how are we going to, who? I don't see in this policy, process, and administration the maintenance, because we're always putting stuff up, but then who's gonna be taking care of that? Who is gonna be ultimately responsible for making sure that the art that we see is the art that we always see and not some broken down rendition of some ragged part of what we are wanting to share with our community? That's basically all I have to say. Thank you so much, Ms. Golden, for your, um, time and effort. And why do we have to have another commission? We got bureau chiefs and directors, and we got all these top guys and things, and they never filter down to where, I feel, and that's my personal opinion, and it's bad for our people in the third district, is when we say we're doing all of this, where's that gap where it actually reaches the people who you're all trying to make this thing happen for? So, yeah, that's it. Thank you so much.
I can respond briefly to a couple of those.
Please, respond to all of them.
All right, I'll do what I can. Um, so far as the community engagement, this has been a bottom-up process. It will continue to be that. Uh, during the community engagement process, which was the front end of this whole plan, we had meetings in every district. We had meetings at community centers. We did a community survey. The idea was that this is driven by residents. They talk about what is important to them so far as the storytelling they want to do in their respective communities, and even locations in their community where public art might be displayed. Going forward, that is a key to this, is going into communities and saying, okay, we, here's a, here's a park. For example, uh, if we want to do something in Windsor Forest, we might look at their, the new, uh, community center going in there and talk about how could public art enhance that? Uh, the, every district has those unique places where public art could be employed. The key is engaging with the community, talking to neighborhood association meetings, and talking about, now we have a public art plan, where can public art go in your community? That, that part is essential. You're right, it should be listed on there, absolutely, we will.
I understand that you had these meetings, but if you look at that, it's nowhere that says that there is any, what you said, community engagement. And since you've already did that, it should not be easy or hard to make it a number eleven or put it number one. or put it number 1. It should be number 1, that we've had these meetings, and this is what you want for your specific district. It doesn't convey that. Looking at that says that we gonna have a commission, and this is what we're gonna do, and whether the people in that community want it or not, there's no input. There, there's nothing on there that says that you had those meetings to tell us what the drive is gonna be, or the vision for each specific district. I know what I want for the third district, but they gonna have to say what they want for the district. And so, when are you gonna meet with us? You know, you've already met with some of the people in that district. When do we get an opportunity to talk to all of the president associations and say, this is what we're rolling out? What do you want in your specific community? Because we have a, I have 28,000 people from President Street to Eisenhower, and it runs in and out, and so, all of those different people, citizens, they want different things. And so, we try to give them what they want, and right there is not telling me that we've given them, even thought about what they should want, I mean. Thank you.
Open legged.
We got some more questions to answer. Hold on. I just took it in. I just also would like to add to, hold on, that the selection panel process that's outlined in more detail in the policy, so if a project is located in your district, the selection panel will be made up of people from your district. So it won't.
From the district.
For the project.
Yes. Okay. And so the other question I didn't ask, and I promise this to be, you're saying that you're gonna execute as artists, and we're saying, we're always talking about Savannah first. There are a lot of artists here in Savannah. We wanna make sure that we utilize the people here in our districts. Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Part of the, there's a couple of components that you're not seeing here, because they're still under work. So I told them, let's go ahead and share the draft plan with you, book the policy, and how those programs are set, and where the detail are. I, I hear you 100%. Any artist who wants to go into a district will be a decision of that community that they want it there. Otherwise, we're wasting money. We've been there, we've done murals, and then the community came back and said, get it off the wall. We don't do nothing like that in our community. So, that core group that's deciding will be the people who live there. What they've done in the plan, if you turn to page 55 through about 73, you'll notice on page 55, it says art everywhere. So what they've done is provided examples for the community to consider, what would they like to see. So each one of these are explaining different types of art, so that your community organizations and residents who live there can create their own vision within their district, because we know every district is different. And so it needs to be district by district, where the community comes together and says, this is our personality. This is what we value, what our core in our area of town. And this will provide them with examples to consider. If, does anything that you see represented here represent you? Does it speak to you, or do you have other ideas? And the art that exists there will be driven and decided by the community.
Assistant City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
That is the whole point of what I'm speaking of. This is a PowerPoint, represent, representing what we are expecting, and yet, it's still, that should have been.
Yeah, no, I agree with you there.
That should have been the first name, you know? I appreciate that, and thank you for your time.
Are you finished with the comments for all the women? While the line?
I just wanted to provide one other question. In the document, you'll see that there's a recommendation for the commission to create a work plan. That work plan will come. With a budget request. In that work plan, it will detail the locations of each proposed project for that coming year. And so there is checks and balances that exist for you all to weigh in and say, I, I don't see my district, I understand we have a limited amount of funding, but in the last two years, my district also hasn't been represented, and you can advocate in that way. And we can ensure that that work plan has a section that says which district will this project be on, and what is the community engagement to date that has occurred to make sure that this project resonates with the community.
Okay, so, again, again, excuse me, again, just for the edifice of everybody, anytime somebody does a PowerPoint in front of me, I would want the people part to be incorporated, and a lot of times they don't, and that is my problem.
All the women, legged.
Thank you, Madam, for Tim. Mr. Assistant City Manager, I'm, I wanna know, how would this connect with our services, like our youth initiatives, as well as our Leisure Services Bureau, and how would this public art attach to our services?
One of the primary locations where we're gonna have art is gonna be in our parks, our passive and active parks. So the opportunity for young people being involved, what we've been discussing in recreation, and you know we have the Recreation Commission, and I know that's represented by folks, we need a youth commission.
Yes.
Of our young people, so that they have a voice at the table in anything from public art to programming that they have. So being able to integrate our young people into this process, to me, is a requirement, and you can feel confident that they'll be involved. They're gonna be the main ones that's gonna be around and enjoying that art, so being able to engage them. There was also a question about local artists. This entire thing is built on local artists. That wasn't gonna be heard from the community. That's what we heard from Sam. We know we have a lot of local artists, and so, we're not looking to try to find people out of town.
But, but to her point, and the look that Alicia had on her face just now, we, I know we talking about it, but we really have to see it, and I wanna make sure that we talk about our artists, like, this, he, this is a second district artist right here, now we wanna make sure that the, the ethnic piece of these different communities, even though, even though the community has been gentrified, the historical portions of our communities and the ethnic piece that's attached to it, we wanna make sure that the art that goes in there don't hide or just dispel away that this community was really built. We wanna make sure that that's there. This is why we asking for the community piece, to give the historical portion of it, so it's there, and it's not just overlooked, and we just putting some flowers somewhere, or we just put an old picture of a dog with wings. We wanna make sure that we have a portion that says what Frog Town, what, what, what East Broad Street is, what Waters Avenue was, what's going on on, on West Broad Street, and what, what it really meant to people just to have that portion of art, and how it can become a gateway piece to lead you throughout the rest of the city through art. And that's what we're asking, and, and I didn't, I really didn't like for you guys to put the picture up there of the Waterworks Building, because I really think it was distasteful, because, and Linda asked the question, what is the plan to provide continued maintenance for art piece? And for us to, to put that type of money into, hopefully, Waterworks Building, and for nobody to really keep up with that artwork, that is very, very distasteful to the people that, who were put up there in the first place, and those were some significant people to be up on that wall like that, and we haven't done anything, even though we haven't done significant work as of yet to the Waterworks Building, but to preserve the windows and those people who are in there, and the, and the contributions they made to this community, that, that shows us what art's gonna look like. This is why we have a apprehension or want to move forward with all kind of projects, because we not taking care of anything else. And I've said it, and I've said it, and I've said it, that we are a city that, and we look like a city that has demolition by neglect attached to it. We are not following through with the things that we supposed to be doing, so to say that we gonna dress up everything, we gonna put some paint on top of it, and we gonna make it look pretty, I appreciate it. But we have to have a maintenance program that's gonna protect these things, so when people come to Savannah and say, it looked cute, but it's dirty, you know? And also, I wanted to make sure that we highlight the fact of, on this presentation, there was a photo on there of historic Yama Crow. We not sure what's gonna happen with Yama Crow. So we can't put that up there, giving people false hope, when other people are working behind the scenes to take down historical ground, of, of our historical features of this city. And also, I wanted to make sure that you guys have a conversation with Public Transit to make Public Transit a part of, and I see that it's a photo in here, but I don't, I didn't see nobody reach out to Chatham Mary Transit, you may have spoken with CAT and their transit bus stops, but have you spoken with you yesterday? No, so they haven't spoken with anybody on Public Transit of how we're gonna be a part of public art, and how transit stops can be, because we do have a, a vision over at Chatham Mary Transit on how we wanna spruce up the bus stops and make those things look good as a part of our piece of being engaged with the community. We just wanna make sure that every step that is made, and every effort that is made, is a holistic plan for the entire community, and not leaving out the most important part of the community, which is the people, the communities, and the gateways, and what you hope.
All the women in there?
Yes, thank you, Madam for Tim. There's actually a terminology for what we're discussing right now. It's been discussed somewhat. It seemed like we're trying to recreate something that already exists. My question is, did your staff, or your partners, anyone at the table, brought up the subject of creative placemaking? And did you all, and so, and, and that is where public art meets urban planning.
Yes.
And in that, if that's our approach, which is a community benefit strategic approach, and we got the Savannah GPS plan, this is the direction we're supposed to be going in, where this project and the art is resident-driven, you know, citizen-led, and, and that's our approach. And we have a system in place, our new strategic plan that dictate that's the way we move. So it is important that this, this is organic artwork that bubbles up from the areas and the communities, and not a top-down approach that, you know, we practiced in the past. And I think that's what you're hearing here. And so, we, we already support that approach in the first district, community benefit, community ordinance, CBAs, and so this is in line with that, I hope. That's what we looking to see when the policy come back to us. And again, I don't know if this is the first time that most of us has had input or had opportunity, but this, you know, we weren't.
Informed.
Right. And, and it would have been a good idea for us to have had an opportunity to have some input prior to right now.
Anything else on the in there?
Yes, there is something. So, will there be, will this policy govern artwork that impact the public, but it actually sit on private property?
The public art plan is for public art on public property. There is a matching mural program proposal that would encourage public grant funding for private property murals, but the public art plan really is for public art on public property.
So, Madam City Manager, Assistant City Manager, what policy we have that governs artwork on private property? Signage and artwork? Because you seen more than signage now. We're seeing some stuff in the first district that doesn't really fit the vibe, but looks like that hokey, hokey pokey, hokey man type art, and it, and it just, you know, so who governs that type thing and approve those things?
Unfortunately, the city is unable to govern public art on private property. It is a First Amendment issue. Where you are able to step in as a city government is through your mural guidelines and through your sign ordinance. Your sign ordinance will define what is a sign versus a mural, and I will spare you a very long discussion, but if the mural or sign is representative of the commercial activity that is happening inside of the building, it is then considered a sign, and the city may regulate it. If someone places a piece of public art on private property that does not advertise the activity that is happening within the commercial building, you are not able to regulate that, unless it has text, but that would be, you would already be regulating it, because it would be a sign. Does that make sense?
It's technical, but yeah, it does.
It's, it's a First Amendment issue.
No, say it again.
Okay.
It didn't make sense.
So, your sign code defines what is a sign. You have some specific limitations on how large the text can be, what it can say, what it's allowed to say, and when it, when you go for a sign permit, you're submitting the permit for a sign. You have to have the, the measurements, you have to have the measurements of the text. You re, you can regulate all of that. That's something that a city is able to regulate. A city is unable to regulate public art on private property unless it advertises the activity that is occurring inside the building itself. So the example that I would give, I wanna put a, a, a sign on my building where my diner is. It's called Amanda's Diner. You said, no, I can't put on a, you know, a 30, 30-foot-deep wall, Amanda's Diner. You said, that's a sign, I'm gonna regulate that. So instead, I decide I wanna put a mural on my building that has a dancing pancake and some eggs, and whatever else. That's advertising what's happening inside of my building. It's advertising the commercial use, so that becomes a sign as well, and you are able to regulate that. It's very technical, and I know it sounds a little silly, but that's the only way that you're able to regulate public art on private property. The, the way that a city may become alert to a piece of public art on private property is through a code enforcement issue. So let's say someone put a, a sculpture on the side of a building, they could report it for a code violation, the city could then go to that private property owner and cite them for a code violation. The code would have to require that, they had to get a permit first, for a life safety issue of something that was applied to a bill. There are a number of things, but unfortunately, the city is not able to regulate art on private property unless it is an advertisement, and that triggers your sign code.
All the women in there, likely had a question?
Yes, thank you. I, I wasn't here for all of your presentation, but I'm very familiar with the monuments and markers commission. So, how does this play in with the monuments and markers commission? Because they're doing the same thing, pretty much, that we're getting ready to do a commission, a art commission on. That, to me, i- i- is redundant. It makes no sense. And we're getting ready to hire a, a art administrator position? I mean, when we already got monument sites, monuments, and markers commission, why are we even doing something like this? I'm just asking that. Now, that's the first question. I heard you say that you all had meetings in the community. I'm looking at where the community workshops were, and I see for District 5, it was in Liberty City, that's on page 13. It was in Liberty City, and then in District 6, it was at the Crusader Neighborhood. Now, there's a section of the 5th District where I live. Nobody is gonna go from the 5th District where I live, off of Middle Ground Road, all the way to the 5th District where you all had this meeting. So I think that you need to make sure that you go into areas that people will, that people don't normally go to, where you all are having these meetings. You understand what I'm saying? Okay, so, go ahead. That's it. And, and thank y'all for the presentation, a little bit that I did here, but I just don't, I can't see us spending money on a art commission and this administrator, when we already have that in place. Okay?
Thank you, all the women. The proposed public art commission would be restricted to just introducing and overseeing public art on public land, so that, that would, that would limit it entirely from what else HSMC does. That'd be the only role of the public art commission, would be overseeing the public art program where public art was on public property.
In the absence of a public art commission, we now have the board for, and these are just recommendations, so we appreciate your feedback. If you give us guidance on what we need to get back to the table on. In the absence of a new public art commission, what would be the alternative? How would you see a structure that we do the existing?
To the existing Cultural Affairs Commission.
To the Cultural Affairs Commission. I remember that the Cultural Affairs Commission had a subcommittee.
It does, a public art subcommittee.
That was working on this public art all along. Would that be something that you consider, like, because you all appointed them anyway, and they had a subcommittee, and you all remember, this has like kinda come up over several years, of we need a public art master plan. Is that viable for you to structure a standing subcommittee that will continue, since those are folks that are already appointed by council, that are already vested in this, and working around this issue, instead of like creating a whole new?
Exactly.
Yeah, we did discuss that as well, and that would be an alternate way to, to approach it.
Okay. And then the other thing I think we have to make sure, that I'm hearing loud and clear from council, and it may be that we're pushing back, I think the, putting this before council in two weeks for adoption, it sounds like we have some more work to do.
Yes.
Is to make sure that we get out and have some meetings with council, give you all some time to look through this.
Yes.
Get the feedback from the public, because it's posted now, and, and it'd be very clear when we return, even if it comes back in the form of some memos detailing how which your concerns are, how the community will be engaged. how the community will be engaged. The one thing that was in the early draft of the plan that I saw that I asked to be taken out of the plan was there were recommendations that were specific to the type of art in specific locations. And so we said, "No, that's something that needs to be decided by the community." Let us have a document that is basically a typology of art that also talks about what maintenance requirements would be. Clearly, we can't make sure we move away from establishing a whole new bureaucracy for doing this. But that we can use to educate our community about, not about what history is and what the community values culturally, but how it can be expressed through art. And then let the community then be engaged from A to Z on what type of art they want, where they want to see it within the community, and the selection process in terms of who those artists are coming forward. It reminds me of the murals that were done over by In Market and how they had to, we had several artists that had to then showcase what it was going to look like in advance, and then allow the community to weigh in on yes, yes, no, yes, and so forth. But if I'm hearing you all correctly, I think we can, we can go back and we got a little bit more work to do on this.
Yes.
Hold the woman, Bell, you got a question?
Uh, not really. It was a comment, and I've spoken to Melissa about it, and it was addressed by Assistant City Manager. Number two, create, yeah, create a public art administrator position within cultural resources. But I am told, I'm led to believe that this is not necessarily a new position, so I don't want to be led to believe that by approving this policy. We're approving a new position. It could be, the do this could be a sore.
It's not in the budget. I think the department, cultural resources, were coming forward saying they're running the cultural arts center, they have all the grant programs, and I think they have like eleven staff. And so they just wanted to make sure, and the city manager was leading as well. He did not support a position on the funding, his program's not even, you know, off the money.
Thank you, that's all.
But as it grows, and we ended up with a really robust portfolio of a bunch of art, and we're trying to manage it all, maybe warrant a position. But his feedback was, you have to wait until, you know, there's indications that we have a meeting, or that it is not now.
Hold the woman, Lanier, then I have.
Yes, Madam ACM. Did we, did we get notified? I'm sure maybe we did. It just seemed now that we're really focusing on this. So maybe it's a step missing, like, once we have this opportunity to hear all this today, and then maybe do these again? Because I would like to have, you know, help get people there and even go and be involved. But for some reason, it just didn't happen.
We did earlier on, at the beginning of the year, they did a presentation over at Board of Education, I think the presentation was there. And this was one of the ones when we got to, to the SPAS that you all utilized in terms of that initial outreach in one district by district, pointing out the public art process at that point, saying, at least they're getting out in every district. This is one series of meetings, but there were other ones that occurred. And we had the information that went out. I know we gave you all so much advice, which means that we did early on. I think it's now on the backend that being revisited and making sure we're going back and out to talk.
The, the, the comment that I was making was that whenever you all have anything involving anything, including cultural arts, art, whatever, there's a section in the Fifth District that does not get this information. So if you can possibly, I don't know how we can do it.
Some of the South Side.
The South Side, yes. I don't know how we can do it, but we just need to make sure that that area is notified. And meetings are in that area as well. I don't know about the other districts, but I know for a fact that the South Side, the Fifth District, we don't get that information.
To the West Side of that.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Hold the woman, Bell.
Oh, thank you, Prutam. I just wanted to, as we're rounding third and wrapping up, you know, we've talked a lot about the areas of improvement, which are really important, and I agree. But the two things that I'm hearing of consensus is we want more public art, we want it citywide, and we want a better process. That maybe Historic Sites and Monuments Commission, it's far beyond their scope. We do want to see it citywide. So I thank you for the effort. Look forward to meeting with you guys over the next week, and we'll be back, propose to have this on your agenda in twelve days. So we've got our marketing orders. Well, we'll see, you know, or a little longer. Maybe, you know, maybe a little longer. All right, a little longer. But thank you so much for the presentation.
Hold the woman, Wilder Brian. We've got to wrap this up so we can get to our next budget item quickly.
Well, I just was wanting to speak, actually sat on the cultural, I mean, the Arts Commission. We already have a Arts Commission. Why can't we incorporate that into what we already have? Save some money, save some time. And the other thing, you know, we were talking about, we have a new marketing director, directress, and the problem that I have, we have all these great ideas, and they never get rolled out into the community. It doesn't matter what it is, right? You can't reach everyone, right? But we had an amazing stormwater, and everybody's talking about stormwater, and the most of the people there was actual staff, right? And so I zoomed it, I mean, I did the FaceTime, and so a part of that, I was looking at it, should be incorporating our marketing department and getting more information out. Because if we not, if, it's on us. We have these great programs, and they're not meeting the masses. And so the people who actually want to come because of time constraints or a job, whatever, they're not getting it. And everybody's not on Facebook, and everybody, so. So we have to do some knocking on doors to get people who are interested in really being engaged in the community. And we start by really committing, and the first thing should be is having those people. And I digress, and I'll stop, but anytime we want to get people committed, then it needs to show that we are committed by having people first, Savannah first.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
And as we move forward with this, I just want to make my comments. And I agree with the consensus of all of my council colleagues on what we're talking about. And just the overall picture that I'm hearing, and I definitely agree, is that equity needs to be spread across the board with this throughout our entire city. And that everyone, every voice, when we say all, that's the mayor states, and we do mean all means all. So we've got to be inclusive of everybody's story, of everybody's art expertise. And, and we've got to do that. This is a good thing, and I really appreciate this happening. So let us move forward with what we've heard, and it's going to be a good thing. So Assistant City Manager and presentators, thank you all so much for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm excited.
Thank you all so much. We're going to have a little bit of a swamming out of our house. There's some artists.
They ain't a lie. They ain't a lie. They do a certain amount of things at a certain time of year. And then when the people really, don't tell me I done called. I done dealt with them. Them folks don't get it.
Girl, why you got them to get the room so cold in there? I know.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah, it's all right, thank you.
Who's in charge of the? Who's in charge of the base? It's cold in there. No, he said that somebody going to adjust it, right?
As we do come back to order, and so we can proceed. Okay, all right. Mary, what's your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next presentation is on housing, affordable housing. We had a recent series of meetings and had a chance to see all of the incredible progress that's been happening over the last two years. And I think that we really had a wonderful book in when we were out at Dunn &amp; College. And had a chance to see that community come to life. Looking forward to seeing all the families and individuals that will be able to move in there and have supportive services. But there's been a lot of progress that's been occurring by the city of Savannah and our many partners. You all know everything that we do is based on partnership in order to really advance and expand opportunities in terms of housing, affordable housing, and workforce housing. And so we got together with a number of our partners and said, "Hey, why don't we go back before council? They have made such an investment on behalf of the community into housing. It's time for us to give a report." And hopefully, we can come before you annually to show you what's accomplished every twelve months. This is another two-part. Today is really sharing with you what the proof of the labor has been to date. Having you have opportunity to see some of those partners and see some of the work that they've been doing. In two weeks, we'll have another workshop, and that's where we want to talk with you all about expanding the number of tools in the toolbox so we can do even more. So today, you're seeing what's been the results of the investments with the tools we already have. And so much of this will be highlights, but look forward to two weeks when we get into the meeting video about their various tools and what support we like, and get your feedback on those details.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we'll now jump over to Mr. Martin Freddy.
Do we have a call?
No.
Okay. Our senior director of our Housing Services Department will introduce our partners and kick us off.
Thank you very much. Martin Freddy, Director of Housing Services. Before we get into the presentation, I'd like to introduce Anita Smith Dixon, whom you all know, CHSA, and Allison Goldie with the Land Bank Authority. They're going to be co-presenting with me. And I'm going to call on Anita before we get started to recognize a number of our partners, both nonprofit, private builders, architects, and what have you. Everything that you see in here today doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens through partnership and through investments that you all are making. So we felt it was important, all the slides you're going to see today, these people that Anita will introduce, they have some role in it. And so anyway, I'll let Anita make the introductions.
Thank you, Martin. So, and looking forward to our annual event this year. We know that partnerships are very invaluable in the community. And so when we think about that and seeing some of our partners, I'm going to start off with Pat Shea. He is the owner of GM Shea Architects. Pat and his team have instrumental in bringing the visions to life, translating ideas into plans, and guiding us through the permitting, and supporting us far beyond the drafting table. So we appreciate Pat at the table. Next, I wanted to highlight Stacy Murray. She is filling in for Jen Dulong with the Chatham-Savannah Authority for the Homeless. Stacy's position at the Homeless Authority is the Senior Director of Operations. We know that they've been a key partner in this. Deborah Simmons is the Executive Director with Neighborhood Improvement Association, also known as NEA. NEA is a community development corporation that was established in 1996. In addition to being a nonprofit housing developer, they provide essential pre- and post-housing counseling and other community benefits. Then we also have from Civis, formerly known as the Galvin Foundation. We are joined by Sue Adler, who's the Director of Programs, and Juan Usquetegue, who's the Development Coordinator. And you'll hear more about their projects and extensive work in the Calabroansville community. We also welcome members of the Dashar family. Representing the various development companies, we have Willie Dashar Senior, owner of Dashar Construction, and a partner of the city and CHSA for more than thirty years. We can see many of the homes that Mr. Dashar has built throughout our community. Also, we have with us his wife, Stephanie Dashar. She is the owner of SLD Development, also a construction arm. Next, we have Kenny, or Kenneth Jinks. Kenny, as we know him, he is the owner, he is the owner of KJ General Contractors. Kenny is a veteran-certified builder and a longtime builder and partner in our community. We have with us Robert Price, Price Custom Homes. And he has worked closely with the Civis Foundation in Calabroansville and NEA in developing single-family homes. And then we have with us Eric and Ashley Scott, both are graduates from Georgia Tech and owners of SDG Construction Services. And they're the builders of 916 MLK.
So those are a lot of great partners. There are many more that we couldn't bring because the room is too small, but we appreciate you guys coming out and all the work that you do with us. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Luke Gardner and Melody Frederick, my Assistant Directors, and Mark Bossinger, who's a coordinator in our department and flies a drone for us. So some of the footage you'll see, he's up in the air flying the drone. But anyway, we got a lot of good people on staff that make this happen behind the scenes, and I appreciate being able to work for everybody on my staff. So, okay, we'll get into the slides, I guess. Yes, ma'am. And in introducing the Dashars, we caught Mr. Dashar and Mrs. Dashar. Junior didn't show today, but you're actually grooming your son to become another builder-developer, and he's actually doing work as well. So all three family members have their own companies that are working through our programs. So anyways, kind of try to run through this fairly quickly. Everything that we do is, goes back to the Housing Savannah Action Plan that was adopted by City Council in 2021, implemented in 2022. So this will be an update on kind of what's happened since the adoption of the plan in 2022. And a huge component of that, in addition to the partnerships, is the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund and the money that has been raised for that fund and contributed largely through the city. Again, I won't spend a lot of time on these because I know we're short on time. But you can see, you know, through three years and ten months, almost the first four years of the adoption of the plan, we're basically 233% ahead of the goal that the plan had for city expenditures of money. That's Savannah Affordable Housing Fund money and HUD money that we get. And that has leveraged about $171,000 of private investments, or 130% ahead of that goal. And overall, in terms of the money goal that makes all this go, we're at 142% of goals. So we're exceeding everything that was set up in the plan, action plan, and are looking forward to continuing that into the future. You can see the different types of activities that we fund and the percentage of people that we help, the incomes of homeowners as average income, average income for buyers and stuff in the lower part of the chart. Again, a key component to all of this is the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund. It was started in 2012 by the city council at that time as Mayor Otis Johnson was leaving office and his term was expiring. They created the fund. They contributed $150,000 of general fund to that fund. You can see in the first ten years of that fund, from 2012 through 2021, the city contributed about $3 million to the fund, and we were able to get $700,000 from the private community into the fund deposits. Since you all adopted the action plan in 2022, the city's contribution to the fund has been $14 million in that four-year period. And leveraging of other private investment into that fund, the biggest being the Georgia Ports Authority, you know, long-term eight-year commitment at $750,000 a year, $6 million over that period of time. The Galvin or Civis Foundation, $1 million into Savannah Gardens, Savannah, Calabroansville activities. And then we had a developer that contributed $400,000 to the fund as well, and he doesn't even work in the program or benefit from that other than providing that money. So you can see we're exceeding goals there, have quite a lot of investment that is taking place. And you can crunch those numbers on your own. I wanted to cover some of the partnerships. Before 2022, we really didn't, as a group, we really didn't focus on providing or trying to work with the groups to provide housing for persons experiencing exiting or at risk of becoming homeless. So that was a new activity for us, it came with the plan. So over this first, you know, three years and ten months, we either have projects that are completed or being under construction or on the drawing board that should provide 136 new homes. 136 new homes. And you can see our partners, we've put their logos at the bottom. This isn't all of them, but these are the ones that are principal to these projects that I'm going to show. Some of you were able to attend the ribbon cutting for Dundee Cottages. Again, because of the city's investment, providing the land, and this is sort of the unique partnership. The city provides the land with improvements to the infrastructure to the Land Bank Authority. Land Bank Authority then owns the land, leases it on a long-term ground lease that's assumable to CHSA Development so they can actually build the vertical improvements. And then, once those are done, you recently approved $3.1 million of home art money and $1.8 million of Savannah Affordable Housing Fund money that would go allow the Homeless Authority to acquire the improvements and assume the lease on the land. So we never lose control of the land of this project, but the buildings are sold. And the nice thing about the $3.1 million of home art money that was used for acquisition or is being used, that will come back into the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund, and that's $3.1 million we didn't have before. So just finding unique ways to work together, building upon our strength and expertise, rather than one of us trying to do everything that takes these partnerships. You'll probably see on Martin Luther King Boulevard, 916, next to Bonzo Reddick's office in the form of balloon shop. Mr. Schindholster, I believe, owns the building on the right. That property you broke ground for in January this year, and it's well under construction. It should be having a grand opening sometime in late spring. That'll provide 16 apartments for persons that are either experiencing exiting or at risk of becoming homeless. It's also going to have a ground floor service center that provides opportunities for service providers to serve that population that's living there, but also other people in the neighborhood, so that it isn't just restricted to that property. Another smaller development is there's an old row house across from Florence Street Elementary School in Calhoun-Sville on Florence Street, 1826. We're doing a gut renovation on that and recreating for handicap-accessible apartments, two-bedroom apartments. And that'll be, that housing will be there and focused on a population that we've heard more about. These people are in the hospital, they're there for treatment, they lose their housing while they're in the hospital, or they can't go home to housing. And so this will be our first stick and our toe in the water to see if we can provide housing for medically fragile individuals that are needing a place to come to for maybe another six months or nine months after they come out of the hospital. And they'd have supportive services associated with that as well. Another one that's on the drawing board, that is, hopefully, the infrastructure work will begin on that next year, is the installation of a road and infrastructure on Dawes Avenue that will result in the construction of 30 new single-family homes and working with the Neighborhood Association. They were hopeful that some of those houses might be available for purchase by persons wanting to be home buyers, and others might be available, as our original plan was, as rental housing that's affordable to families that are experiencing exiting or at risk of homelessness, and that are connected with service providers that are providing the services necessary. I think I call Anita up right now to take over, so you're fortunate.
You know, when we think about Calhoun-Sville neighborhood, we will be remiss if we don't mention the relationship that we have with the Neighborhood Association. We've been able to develop a close relationship with them as we continue to move forward alongside of them in their community. So when we think about some of the developments in Calhoun-Sville, this council or previous council approved $560,000 from CHSA to use the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund, and this is to assist in the renovation of the charity hospital and Florence Street Elementary School renovation. And when you ride by that development, you see it currently under construction. We also can see NEA, Neighborhood Improvement Association. They developed two houses over in Calhoun-Sville. Again, we're thinking about partnerships. Land Bank Authority provided the land to NEA. NEA then was able to obtain funding from the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund, which consisted of funds from Civis, Georgia Ports, and funded from the city to develop the homes that were sold to first-time home buyers. And the buyer also was able to use similar type of funding from Civis, GPA, and Savannah Affordable Housing Fund for down payment assistance. When we think about Civis, formerly known as Gavin, we can see that they've contributed $1,050,000 to the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund in 2023, and we know that this was in support of the Housing Savannah Action Plan. And when we look at the charts, we can really see how they've utilized funding in the housing activities that have resulted from that partnership. We can see that there's 61 homes between housing improvement, purchase, construction, rental assistance that's been impacted. And we can see that they also have an additional investment. Many of you are familiar with the Kaia House. When you ride by, you can really see the renovation on that particular site. Their additional, their own private additional investment, we can see that have resulted in down payment assistance, the housing acquisition and development of 13 homes, and then, of course, the Kaia Campus. You may recall, many times when we drove down MLK, we used to see 2205, 2207. One was dilapidated home, as you see here in the photo. The other one was a vacant lot. But what you now see is over to the right, two beautiful homes. So Civis was, they renovated one of the homes and built the second home, and in the back, there are two ADUs. They sold the, these four dwellings to CHSA Development, which we have made available as rental in the community. And then we can see here from the photos, the result of their work, our work as partners, your work as a local government, being able to impact people, and that's what's most important, people. We know that we're, we have a housing crisis, but here you could see the result of two families being able to obtain keys to the home. Land Bank helped throughout this process as a partner, making property available for renovation and construction. Civis invested funds for the acquisition, renovation, and development. And again, we see the result, which are families. Civis has also constructed eight new homes in the Calhoun-Sville community. The city and Land Bank made the property available. Civis invested in the acquisition and development. CHSA provided down payment assistance with Civis, GPA, the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund. We can see the homes are located on Lavinia, 42nd Street, and Bullock Street in that community. And then we see the Kaia House, as it looked a couple days ago, but as you ride by, it changes often. Civis invested $1.3 million in the acquisition and renovation of the Kaia Campus, which includes the Kaia House as well as some adjoining historic commercial property. And so stay tuned for the continued unveiling of the results of that initiative. And then Civis also purchased the historic WW Law Home, which is also in Calhoun-Sville. It was renovated. We could see the results of it, and it is now being used as rental property in the And that's it for me.
All right, Allison.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Martin. Thank you for that announcement. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate being here today and having an opportunity to come before you and update us on the Land Bank and what we've been doing. When I started at the Land Bank, I started in 2019, and then COVID hit. But it gave me an opportunity to ride through the neighborhoods of Savannah, to learn the neighborhoods of Savannah, to learn the people in Savannah. And so that was a positive for me, coming into the Land Bank. When I came, the first thing I did is look at the inventory that we had at the time. This is one of the properties you see right here, 712 West 39th Street. This property was an eyesore, and I was out there during COVID. I was taking pictures of it. I was walking around it because it had really come to my attention. We had spent a lot of money on it. It had been in the Land Bank's inventory for quite a long time, almost 10 years. So the mission of the Land Bank is to acquire vacant, abandoned, dilapidated properties, but it's not to sit on them and hold them, right? The mission is for us to get those properties back into productive use, get them back on the tax roll, get them back producing income, but also providing homes and, and building and revitalizing neighborhoods. That's our mission. So when I was out there taking pictures of this property, folks started to gather around me, and more and more. And, you know, they're real friendly in Calhoun-Sville. So I had a lot of folks come up and say, what's the deal with this property? And I kind of said, well, Land Bank owns it. Yeah, right, owns it. So they're like, what's the plan for it? I said, well, we're trying to determine what the plan is for this property. And they's like, tear it down. We're sick of it. I knew from just looking at the maintenance on this property that we were continuously paying people to go out there and pick up sofas and dumping behind it. So we came up with a plan. We partnered with Historic Savannah Foundation, and we found a developer for it. And you can see, we didn't have to tear it down. One of those folks walked away saying, yeah, I believe you're going to do something with this property when I see it, because it had been there a long time. But you can see today, those are four, those are four units, two are affordable to a market rate. They all look exactly the same, and the neighborhood's quite happy that they've been renovated. So in the interest of time, I'm not going to go any further, but I am going to show you some stats of what's happened since I came. And keep in mind, we had two years of COVID in this. But we've actually acquired 107 properties. 62 of those properties were sold to MWBE firms or persons and individuals. Four properties were sold to two non-minority firms or persons. 41 properties sold to seven nonprofit organizations. So 107 properties sold to 30 firms, but it's produced 124 new dwelling units in the city. So sometimes we're selling a property that, you know, we can only put a very small two-bedroom house on, but they sell like hotcakes. Other times, we are, we have properties like this one that are going to provide four units. So we're really out there making a difference. I'd like for you to know that when it's, when it's possible, when it's applicable, if we're acquiring properties at tax sales, we have to clean up the titles on those properties. Part of that process is saying, who owned that property? Who owned that property in the past? So if we can identify heirs that are interested in keeping their properties, then we're going to work with those heirs. So while we're cleaning up the properties, you know, we get folks that they're going to get all kinds of paperwork because we're trying to find who owned those properties in the past. And so I get phone calls saying, well, I'd love to keep my property and do something with it. So we can work with them, and we can offer them some of the programs that go through the city's housing department, down payment assistance, maybe some construction loan funds to rehab or renovate that property or build something new. And then we have folks that say, I'm so glad you bought this property, and I'm so glad that it's going to be used, but I don't live here anymore and I don't want it, and code enforcement's been calling me for years to try and cut the grass, and I didn't know what to do with it. I couldn't sell it. So we're also an avenue for those folks that can't get that generational wealth out of properties that their parents and grandparents wanted them to have because of an unclear title. So anyway, that's, that's what we've been busy doing, and Martin's standing here looking at me like, get out. So I'm getting pulled away.
All right. So this is a lightning fast round or whatever it is in Jeopardy. Wanted to introduce you all or bring you, give you an update on the 1K and 10 program, which was to utilize $10 million of SPOS funds to buy blighted and abandoned property over a 10-year period. And we're really focusing right now at the request of the city manager and the Neighborhood Association in Calhoun-Sville, where all this positive investment is taking place. There's still so many properties there that are just overrun with decay and blighted vacant lots. And, you know, for those people trying to build generational wealth and taking care of their properties and able to do it, the life is being sucked out of their property from all the stuff that's occurring around it. Our goal, as Allison said, is to try and acquire property that's in this condition, clear the title, which most of it has to be cleared because people cannot clear it on their own. And then because we've cleared the title, we know who all the heirs are, reaching out to the heirs to see if they have an interest in buying the property back with a clear title, we can help finance that acquisition and the renovation. So this is the type of property that we're seeking to pursue. Just to show it's not random, we start out with a map identifying all vacant lots and vacant structures and properties owned by the city land bank. Then we get with the police department to identify where the hotspots are, and the darker color red is where we begin to see a lot of criminal activity associated with the blighted and abandoned property. Then we adopt an area of that neighborhood to begin focusing on, and this thing is moving me along even quicker than I can talk. So again, for each property that we look at, we actually do a deep dive into it to see if it meets the state definition of blight, so that if necessary, we can utilize our eminent domain powers to acquire it. We would have to come to you all for permission to do that. But again, if we're successful in doing that, we can get the property back with a clear title, and we can get it into the hands of an heir, so now they can actually do something with it if they want to. And they can also help preserve the, the value of property in the neighborhood that people have lived there and have been able to maintain and try, try and do their best to, to succeed in that. Thank you for your support, and they said if I'd... Oops. There you go.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, our...
Madam City Manager, let me, all right, so we, I know y'all want to lay on this for a while, but we're kind of on a time crunch to allow you to reset. So I don't know if there are any questions?
I do. I want to go first. So I wrote down everything because I didn't want to miss anything, starting with the Scots, who church members doing amazing things. Thank you for what you do at Green Rite too. And Mr. Jinks Dundee and the Simmons, oh, come on, Debbie. She's doing everything with Neighborhood Services from W2 forums and all of that. Mr. Shea, woo, thank you a lot. Allison and Anita, when she says, stay tuned, oh, that's a blessing coming up, I know, right? And so Luke, and Mr. Robert, oh, Mr. Robert is my go-to person. If we have anybody who needs anything in the community, and Mr. Jinks do little things, carpentry stuff, that's who we call. So he's amazing, right?
You said carpentry?
He does, developer, he does houses. He did the loving houses on Long Street in East Savannah. Right. No, I want everybody to know, loving houses on Long Street in East Savannah, right? Mr. Thrashers in... I just want to thank everybody. Sue Adler, there's just so many moving parts. But I want to say, when y'all do PowerPoints, this is what I'm talking about. When you do these PowerPoints and you come, we need to be sitting at this table saying that we are familiar with your work. A lot of times y'all do these presentations, we got to wait to see what happens, but I personally in the 3rd District have experienced these people who are in our community doing the Homeless Authority, just amazing things, the 39 houses that are in our community. And again, when Anita Smith Dixon says, stay tuned, some amazing things are happening. And I'm just so appreciative of Martin, Freddie, the City of Savannah's housing secret weapon. And so I just wanted to throw those out. I hope I missed, I got everybody out. I wanted to say thank you for, but we're doing amazing things. And so when we sit here, people need to know, because that marketing strategy that we were talking about, people don't know. They only know the things that happen associated with crimes, but we're doing amazing things with Team Savannah, and I wanted to make sure that I shouted out everybody. I want to make sure I got everybody up for this. Just thank you, Thrashers. You know, y'all in the 3rd District too, making those houses. So thank you, Mr. Thrasher. Thank you, son. Thank you, Ben. Thank you so much. And just appreciative. And thank Team Savannah and you for making this thing happen. We started out from tents in Dundee Village, and people didn't want it there. We're taking some stuff. So it works in the 3rd District, it'll work in the other districts, and we continue to take bites out of crime, I'm talking, and housing. And so thank you for our amazing team that we put together. I appreciate it. And I'm like, I'm taking a line from out of the mirrors, and this is where we play. Come on, y'all. Yeah. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you all so much for listening to us.
Yes.
In reference to the medical frail housing...
were talking about, people don't know. They only know the things that happen associated with crimes, but we're doing amazing things with Team Savannah, and I wanted to make sure that I shouted out everybody, want to make sure I got everybody off of this. Just thank you, Thrashers. You know, y'all in the third district too, making those houses. So thank you, Mr. Thrasher. Thank you, son. Thank you, good, oh, thank you so much. And just appreciative, and thank Team Savannah and you for making this thing happen. We started out from tents in Dundee Village, and people didn't want it there. We're taking some stuff. So if it works in the third district, it'll work in the other districts, and we continue to take bites out of time, I'm talking, and housing. And so thank you for our amazing team that we put together. I appreciate it. And I'm like, I'm taking a, a line from out of the mayor's, and this is where we play. Come on, y'all. Yeah. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to um, thank you all so much for listening to us.
Yes.
In reference to the medical frail housing that we're getting ready to do. I just really want to applaud you all for doing it, for our citizens who really, you know, some people who first of all can't afford to be in the hospital, but they're there, and they're being taken care of, everybody should care, and other things. But then they don't know where they'll be going after they do it well. So thank you so much, everybody, uh for listening and making it happen. Also want to thank you all so much, and Alderwoman Lanier, Alderwoman Lanier and I, we really was doing this work in reference to Dawes Avenue. We did not misstep on Dawes. We heard for constituents over in Okeechobee. Um, and um, you know, I know the mayor started all this off too, uh in the first district, and with um the citizens getting together, and she, you know, leading this whole team with her citizens, because what happened was, uh when the Okeechobee Highway 17 came through, it divided that community. And so she has the, the north side of Oke, uh Okeechobee Highway 17, which is still Okeechobee. And I have on the fifth street, which is the south side of that safe area. So I just want to thank Alderwoman Lanier and our constituents and all of us, because this is a new development for Dawes Avenue, uh development, and we're going to be bringing over 30 new homes. And these homes are for, specific for families experiencing exiting at or at risk of being homeless, and this is what this development is all about. Thank you, Mr. Freddie. Thank you, your team. Also, kind of give a shout out to Ms. Liddy, Bridgette Liddy, and the city manager's office for just keeping us on course with this, because this was not something that's just on the streets of paper. It's been a lot of work uh behind it, and thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Menegah, you, you had a hand up?
Yes, sir. Um, um, Madam Assistant City Manager, could we play this on, on uh Channel Eight as much as possible? Um, anytime we have uh these PowerPoints and stuff, could we find a way with uh public information that we can put it on our, on our sites? Even, uh, just even give it to us so we can put it on our social media of all the good things that's happening? Because um I'm just looking forward to, um, now that we have a new director, and we also have Ariel and the, uh, and our team, that they can just use some, do some amazing things with, uh, we're highlighting what we do. So this kind of stuff here, this is some stuff that the community really want to see on our public information channels. Thank you, sir.
I, I want to thank, uh, I want to thank council. When I presented the Housing Savannah Task Force and COVID hit, um, it was after years of talking to people like Israel Small, Tapley, Martin Freddie. Where you have no vision, people perish. And so in creating this plan and getting out of the way, and that's what happened. Our folks were able to work within their strengths and their talents, Tapley, Martin, Anita, certainly Allison, to all involved, uh, to just get things done in a very big and significant way. We don't win by playing small ball. We win by moonshots. We win by throwing the ball, to use my analogy, football, down the field, and uh it's been happening. Mr. Attorney, I really want to ramp up, um, because as much as I see the improvement, I see, second, every time we see improvement, we still see blighted properties. And I don't know, are we able, are we having, I think we still have the money from the 1K and 10, but to really do a huge public service campaign of saying, if you have a property that is tied up, because it's always, the person that's paying the taxes, there's always the family member you don't know, you don't see, the one that says, we need to sell him my house, and the other one says, sell it, get us the money. I mean, that this, the eminent domain process has been an effective way for us to help families clear title and to help them have dinner together again, because, you know, property separates folks. And maybe we, you know, we ask folks, you know, we really have them in very large ways. If the holidays are coming, if y'all got a property and your family has been tied up a long time, come to us and let us go ahead, land bake it, enter the domain, and get it back on there to be with you. I mean, what do y'all think about that? I mean, I think with the holidays coming, this is a good time to get these families talking and let them fight out the money in probate court. Yes, let me get up.
Let's help them. Let's help them renovate the property to keep it in the...
However it is.
I mean, instead of...
But oftentimes, the issue is, the issue is still title. It's like, nobody can put your name in the title, because if I fix it, I could fix it, but I still don't own it.
Well, we have something, right, with CHSA?
Yes.
So, so that is why...
We've been telling people to come there.
So we have about a week or two before Thanksgiving, but certainly for Christmas, why don't we do an annual blitz of, of some public uh communication campaigns, really just kind of saying, hey, you know, call us. Call us, and then let's see what we can do for your individual situation. Because as much as we create these opportunities, there's still houses. I even saw a church last week. It looked like the roof was getting ready to come down on it. I mean, let's, let's help these folks and help us at the same time in dealing with it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's a great idea, and I don't know if it's already in our portfolio, but assisting in any estate planning services.
We did.
As a public resource and a public utility, uh just like we do for credit assistance or, or, or otherwise, and, and certainly with the budget coming up, I don't know if there are any nonprofits or entities that can support this.
Yes, sir. Uh, we did Manifest 2025, um, in which we did estate planning workshops and actually helped, helped people pay for um simple wells, and we could ramp that up as well. Um, we got a grant uh from the African American Mayors Association through the Economic Mobility Leadership Institute, but uh maybe we could put more money to that, because that, that's the problem. We don't think we're going to die. And then we do, and we have not made plans, and then when Grandma dies, everybody will remember something good that Grandma said. The house is yours, the house is yours, the house is yours, and it creates an issue for us. So maybe, to your point, which is a good point, if more people have estate plans, then we have less people to run into those issues.
Exactly. That's some of the work we're doing on the west side.
Huh?
That's some of the work that we're doing in the communities.
Yeah. Anything else? We, we have about 20 minutes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay. So the Affordable Housing Fund, thank you all for the presentation. Good job. Allison, you've done a great job with the land bank. Um, the Affordable Housing Fund has been a great tool for us, and I've had the opportunity to sit and step up board, and we created that fund and had, and turned it over to the city. And it is all we envisioned it to be, and I'm sure we could do even more, so you guys are doing a great job with that. Um, and I've been having questions about the Georgia Port's authority contribution, and uh it'd be good if we could know how that money is helping the portside communities, the ones that suffer constantly from the negative impacts of the port. So we definitely need to see uh that fund uh helping in that area. I, I'm sure um we could find some folks that has been helped. Let's make sure that we let the community know that, that those funds are being in the portside, portside, impacted most communities. Uh, so, uh, Alderwoman, Mayor Protim, Shabazz and I have been working and having quite a few meetings, face to face and virtually. Alderwoman Bell has been attended in the Okeechobee area about the plan that's coming for Okeechobee and Dawes. And what has happened, the Highway 17 corridor with the widening, the much-needed work and improvements, has divided the communities, and they're not only divided based on uh the road, but with, uh, they're in two different districts. So the, the people on the Okeechobee side are saying, well, let's make sure that we could uh get some benefits for the Okeechobee side that needs the work most, where people already exist, and then the opportunity to move forward with the plan on the Dawes side is prime. So we're trying to find a balance and talking to Jay and, and, and staff about uh some of the asks from Okeechobee. And one of the main things is an access road, because the new road creates a more of a hindrance for them to have one way in and one way out, and on the way out, you can only make a right turn, and no more can you make that left turn. So they are inhibited and looking for another access road. Staff is working with them to identify some possibilities there. But more than that, we need a, an area plan over there, because we, we're, uh, there are some environmental issues, there's growth and development, there are industrial plots that have been intrusive, so that area plan is so much needed in that area as well as some others. Um, and that's been asked of Jay, so that's on the table too with staff, but I'm just mentioning it now. And when we talk about the, the project at 916 MLK, um, that was a big issue when that property was decided to be demolished, because it's, it's very historic. It's the Savannah Pharmacy Site. So when we talk about it, it's gone, but let's at least acknowledge, you know, the history that was there, the cultural connection, Savannah Pharmacy Site. Over in the Charity Hospital on Florence Street, I'm glad you all are doing that work, because that was an area where we heavily got complaints about maintenance over there quite a bit. Haven't gotten them lately, so hopefully, uh, I feel that you all are managing that process, whoever, um, a little better, because there was a lot of calls coming out from there. So I'm glad to see that work being done. Uh, with the Gavin Project, uh, the Community Association, they're glad to see um the work that's being done there. Of course, like everywhere else in the area, they're concerned about um the, the impact on higher taxes and, and just higher values that make everything more expensive. And with the Kaya, with the Kaya House, uh, it looks great. They explained the campus and, and the opportunity for residents to have um some involvement or, or have a resource there. It is a community asset, and my concern only was to make sure that the community benefit from this asset, and they don't feel so foreign to it. Um, it was interesting hearing a, a resident talk about, Miss, hearing Ms. Kaya play the piano. The piano is still there on the second story, and so they have these, these lived experiences, and we don't want to make them feel foreign to that asset. It's, and, and I think that, uh, you all heard me when we had the meeting, so we're looking forward, forward that being a place where the community could, could benefit from and enjoy. And that's it. So thank you all. Oh, one last thing. Mr. James, Mr. Kenny James, you did a great job. My childhood friend for over 60 years, so I appreciate it. I'm so glad to see that, when I remember our stories from childhood. You're doing a great job. I just want to say thank you. Were you before, ma'am?
I, I, I don't know, whatever. Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Housing, for phenomenal presentation. I am so happy to see all of these people that's participating in, in housing. Stephanie, we go way, way back. Um, I'm just excited. I may not show it here, but believe you me, inside, I'm jumping. Martin Freddie, you did the doggone thing, and your team. Thank you very, very much. Um, I do would, I, 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 you have programs, home repair programs for homeowners. I would like for you all to talk about that more often, because I get phone calls from our constituents wanting to know, how can the city help them with roof repairs, um, just minor things, you know? So if you all can elaborate on that more, I would greatly appreciate it. Land Bank Authority, uh, the minority participation firms that you all have, where did I see it at? I've been going back and forth with it. I know it's in here. Um, I would like to get a list of those firms. Oh, here we go. A list of those firms, please. Um, and I would also like for you all to explain to the public how the Land Bank Authority operates. How, uh, when your meetings are taking place, how can individuals go online to get copies of your minutes and what have you? Because I'm constantly asked, how do we purchase property from the city? So, and I tell them, go through the Land Bank Authority. So I need you to give more information, more details, and what have you, okay? And I do believe that that's, oh, oh, Mercy Housing. Whatever happened to those tenants that lived there? Because myself and Alderwoman Lanier, we went and visited um that particular uh property, and they were having some issues, and I, a lot of the tenants were afraid that they were going to be displaced. So did they put those individuals in alternate housing, or whatever happened with those? Do you know?
I can, I can follow up and check. It's my understanding they were finding alternative housing for them while the construction was going on, and if they had an interest in looking back on some construction, they would have been offered to do that.
Okay. And when will the construction be completed?
Uh, Pat, you're the architect, am I right? Do you have any other information? We're about six months out, I think.
Six months?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's been spent some delays, we've counted a lot more mold and some of the other things that we were hoping we wouldn't find, but we did. So, uh, but they're, they're making very good progress.
Okay. So six months out.
Yeah.
Thank you. I believe that's it.
That's all I want to say. You're done? I'm trying, right? You're done? I said, thank you. Okay. Um, Martin, Anita, Allison, Sue, all of you all, thank you all for what you're doing, and everybody else who I don't know. I don't have childhood friends and all that, because I wasn't born here, but you all are doing an amazing job, and I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
One quick thing. This is where, I'm hungry too. One quick thing. Um, so it's, it's no one-size-fit-all, no cookie cutter thing, and, and we talked about the art and, and how it should have the flavor of the area. And so there are so many opportunities in the first district going forward. We all know that for housing and community development, um, some of the larger tracts of land close to the city core, you know, so it's full of opportunity. But we're having conversations about modular houses and, and container villages and this kind of thing, so we look to have some innovation. So I'm sure y'all are thinking in terms of innovation. I know we're going to be looking more of opportunities in the first district. Just think, let's, let's see how we could do something of, of that is transitional. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. We stay on adjourned. 13 minutes, we start meeting.
Are we having executive session?
No. Tapley, how much time do you need?